Now gonna call the Wednesday. Good afternoon, I'm now gonna call the Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners.
January.
January twenty-five, two oh two-three meeting to order. On Thursday, March twelve, two thousand and twenty, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mass General Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty. That order was effective immediately, and until it is rescinded, all the state of emergency is terminated. On July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, by the action of legislature, that order was continued until March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three. Good afternoon, I'm gonna call this meeting to order, gonna ask everyone to join us in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
I'm gonna call the roll, Commissioner Stady.
Present, sir.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
And Commissioner Shea is present. If I see no objection, before we go into executive session, I'd like to reach over to number twelve, an opera, an opera warrant for approval, we have the town of Franklin today, uh, so that we have some guests with us uh, from the town, and they won't have to wait for the whole meeting, so if I have no objection, we're gonna go to item number twelve. Uh, Director Cronin, opera warrants for approval, would you read the warrant, and then we'll say hello to our friends and go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, this afternoon, I bring before you a, uh, the latest opera grant application for your consideration, this is from the town of Franklin. Um, they have applied for, um, one million fifty-five thousand and ninety dollars, is that correct, Jennifer, did I get that correct? Yes. Um, this particular grant will fund an infrastructure project in the town of Franklin. It's a replacement of public water mains in the Janey Avenue area that'll be on useful life, uh, it will include replacement of aged cast iron and asbestos concrete pipe with ductile iron pipe. This is not Franklin's first award, but it is certainly one of their larger ones, and before you this afternoon is our advisory board, uh, representative from Franklin, Mr. Peter Bedula, as well as Jennifer Thompson, who, working on uh, on behalf of the town of Franklin, has been very helpful collaborating all of the, um, the opera grant material for Clifton Larson review, and both of them are here today to accept this award from Norfolk County Commissioners.
Thank you. Peter, how are you today?
Oh, Pete, you're muted.
Pete. Pete, you're muted, I'm sorry.
There we go.
There we go, very good, thank you, thank you to the Commissioners and Mr. Chairman, uh, doing very well, thank you, it's nice to see that we're taking advantage of the funds that are available, um, and just shows another good thing that the county gets to do for all the local communities.
Thank you. Jennifer, how are you today?
Good, how are you?
We're good, we're good, and I might note that, uh, this, uh, public works out, Paul, for lack of a better term, uh, money that's gonna be used there, water and sewer is probably the biggest, it is the biggest category of uh, what, what the towns are asking for, and it's one of the big ones, and it's really worked out well with the upper funds, so it's probably, uh, only one or two counties so far that haven't asked for money and water, and so it's all, uh, pretty straightforward stuff, but, uh, all of the towns and cities need it, so we're happy to work it out, so this grant is all set, it's on the warrant, and it's ready to go. Commissioners, any comment?
We should see.
Commissioner Stady.
Yeah, if I could, thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, of course, through you. Uh, uh, Chairman Shea and myself attended the Mass Municipal Conference, and certainly in my discussions with many local officials, opera was on the tongues of everybody, getting the money out, and the fear perhaps of clawback because of the change at the national level, so it's great to see Franklin getting this money, as Peter said. Uh, and by the way, Peter does an excellent job representing your town, uh, uh, in a, in a fine fashion, he's a, he's always attending. Uh, he has a great point of view, brings a lot of experience, and he's a great addition, so it's great to see Peter here today. Uh, but that money, um, is that particular area, is that, you know, is that an older area of Franklin? That, you know, I was wondering, just curious myself, uh, Jennifer.
Yep, so, sure, uh, it, so Janey, Janey Ave is off of Pond Street, I don't know if you're familiar with, um, with Franklin, um, uh, that area of Franklin, so if you take Oak Street where the high school is, it intersects with Pond, and then the Janey Street area, um, is like Janey Schofield, Oak Street Extension, that whole area, the pipe is old, it's ductile iron pipe, it's at least seventy-five years old, if not older, um, because it is an older section of town. So you're absolutely right, those, um, it addresses two major things in Franklin, one being water quality, because the pipe is so old, and two being fire flows in the area, because the pipe is so constricted, because it's, you know, becomes, uh, they call it tuberculated, it becomes so much smaller than it's meant to be.
Right.
Um, so it'll help both, it'll help the quality of water for the residents, but it will also help with the fire flows in the area, for, so it's a public.
And that's something I talk into some of the fire chiefs, that's a great point, is that when we look at these water pipes, we're always focused, and we should be, on water quality, but also the other part of the aspect is fire prevention, which helps as well, in terms of your town, the rating, right? The homeowners, things like that, there's a lot of trickle effect, so it's great, that's great.
Yeah.
But, uh, no, pleased to meet you, Pete, always good to see you, and I won't take any more time, but I thought, um, this is great news, and I would say, keep them coming, if you can, you know what I mean?
Thanks, yeah, yeah.
There's rumors out there, so, you know, keep it coming, but thank you, congratulations.
Thanks.
Peter, you wanna say anything? Okay, we need a motion, Commissioner Stady.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, with pleasure, I'd move that we approve the opera grant to the town of Franklin, uh, any amount of, uh, now, let's see, I had it right here, one million fifty-five thousand ninety dollars, is that correct, John?
That's right.
Second, the amount is for, uh, under the category of infrastructure water improvement, uh, as outlined and presented and approved by our director.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Uh, it is a vote. Thank you very much, Franklin.
Thank you, Jennifer, thank you, Peter.
Thank you, and thanks to John and Bill, who are always so helpful, and to the Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, take care.
Thank you for the kind words, Commissioner Stady, and thank you to the Commissioners.
Thank you, Peter, we're back to number three.
Here.
Executive session. I need a motion, please, okay.
I'll make a motion, we go into executive session pursuant to purposes three and six of Master in Law Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, subsection A, subsection one, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, as well to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and the chair so declares.
Second motion. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, call the roll, Commissioner Stady.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Co- Collins.
Yes.
And Commissioner Shea votes yes, we're gonna go into executive session.
Yeah, the chair so declares.
Because the chairs has declared confidentiality. I might mention and remind everyone, we're coming back to the regular agenda after this executive session. So stay with us, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if there's pause of moments, uh, I will put everyone into the waiting room.
Thank you, Commissioner.
John, if you could just unmute the Commissioners.
Okay.
Welcome back.
Correct. Okay, thank you, we're back on the record on our Wednesday, July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners. We're gonna go to item number four, which admits to the open session meeting of January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three for approval.
I move approval of the meeting minutes as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Number five is tabled for today's meeting, if we can have a motion to table it, the executive session minutes are not ready, they won't be ready next week.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number six, appointments. We have none. Number seven, public comment. Each meeting we allow for public comment, the Director Cronin, do you have anyone that has notified you about public comment?
No, sir.
How about out in Zoomland, do we have anyone on the public comment uh, part of our agenda? Now is the time to speak up. Okay. Last call for public comment, thank you. Number eight, old business. We have none. Number nine, personnel matters for consideration. I, we usually have some every meeting, we do not have any today, so we're gonna, uh, pass on number nine. Number ten, payroll and expense warrants.
Peter.
Okay, Commissioner Collins, please.
Okay. Uh, let's see, I move warrant uh, twenty-three dash thirty payroll accounting, the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirteen cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, I move warrant twenty-three dash thirty subsection fifteen, payroll school in the amount of three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-three cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote, next, I move warrant twenty-three dash zero seven B, expense of the school in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty, fifty-five dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, I move, uh, warrant oh one dash oh four dash twenty-three, expense of the county in the amount of three hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move warrant twenty-three dash twenty-two, Opera Franklin, in the amount of one million fifty-five thousand ninety dollars.
A seconded, yes.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and I move warrant twenty-three dash twenty-two, Wallaston Recreational Facility Sales Tax, the amount of two hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-three cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, this concludes the payroll and expense warrants for today's meeting. Number eleven, Report on American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one, Norfolk County Economic Development Publication. Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, a few items under this category, um, the first, just to announce to the Ca- uh, Commissioners, as promised, we've worked with our, uh, auditors, Clifton Larson, to develop a model of recalculating the revenue replacement value that had been previously assigned to each commu- eligible community in Norfolk County. The Commissioners may recall that through the American Rescue Plan Act, we were given a ten million dollar revenue replacement value, um, and initially, we distributed that value based on the per capita population, um, of, uh, Norfolk County communities. Um, over the last year and a half, uh, we've learned that several communities are not intending to use that assigned value, and we've informed the communities that at some point during the generation of this grant, we would revisit the calculation and redistribute that value, um, accordingly to the interested communities. Uh, we've learned that approximately six, I believe, communities at this point have announced, um, that they will not be using the revenue replacement allotment, and that's because many of them have moved into large-scale grants that are eligible under other cu- uh, categories such as infrastructure. Um, so when we approached Clifton Larson, we asked them to assess uh, what these values will look like. Uh, this will be, um, an improvement to remaining communities' use of revenue replacement funds, which we think will be well received. Um, I'll have a distribution, um, uh, ready for, um, each of the communities to see what their new values will look like, but safe to say that as a result of this exercise, approximately three point five million dollars uh, in revenue replacement funds are gonna be redistributed to the remaining twenty or so communities that want it. Um, so some communities will see, uh, an improvement, and I'll get into um, how that might benefit communities like Dedham, under my Director's report in just a minute, so we're undergoing that, I hope to have that release out by the end of the month to the Norfolk County communities, so they can see what their new values are. Um, second of all, um, Mr. Bill Galvin, who, as you know, is our Assistant Opera Coordinator, reached out to, uh, four communities that I announced last week, have yet to have any action, um, in our, our portal, that is, we've received no uh, draft or other, um, official application for funds. Uh, as a result of his work, we've heard directly from three of them, um, and it's helpful, because we now have a better understanding about what their plans are. In addition, um, Assistant Director Bill Buckley, uh, working with Advisory Board Member Beth Childs, Dr. Childs, um, has connected us with the new town, uh, administrator in Brookline, um, and alerted him that we would very much like to work with the town to initiate some activity, uh, relative to their award on ARPA, the town administrator indicated he was aware of his, um, um, allotment, um, and was very confident that Brookline would be heard from soon. Um, nevertheless, um, we're pushing back a little bit, we'd like to meet with the town of Brookline Town Manager and learn a little bit more about what his intentions are, as the Commissioners possibly understand, Brookline has one of the largest awards, um, coming from Norfolk County, and, uh, we wanna make sure that as the new town administrator gets his feet wet and understands the road ahead, that he sees that, uh, the clock is running, and it's our intention to help him expedite what their intentions are to, uh, get the mon- monies flowing in Brookline. Uh, and then finally, under this particular item, there was a request um, to consider funding, um, a subscription fee for a publication that, um, Commissioner Stady participated in, um, Commissioner, would you like in your proceeding, or did you wanna be heard from on this?
I just, I mean, briefly, I'm not sure what you shared with, uh, them, John, uh, but, you know, through the chair, uh, I was interviewed by a business magazine that features, uh, towns, cities, counties, different kind of entities, with the idea of putting them in their best light and showing them as being, say, uh, business-friendly, um. Uh, it, uh, was a great interview, I was very honored and humbled to have it done, but at the end, uh, the gentleman who interviewed me then said, well, now you know, if you wanna be uh, featured and so on, and whatever, there's a cost associated, he had different layers, which I'll, I'll defer to John to break down. Um, I thought they were expensive, I'll be honest, I know money is tight, moving forward, we have to watch our budget. I tried to look at risk reward, I'm taking myself out of it, just looking at what's the benefit for the county, how does it hurt, help us in helping our member towns, and maybe, John, and you can evaluate that better, whereas I'll be, maybe you know, it is objective, but I thought, though, some kind of get, we could use opera money, or something with economic development funds to stabilize the costs, I'd be for it, but if we're just gonna put it into our budget, then that's something we'd take a hard look at, be on, right, and what was it, he had different layers, what was the lowest layer he had, eleven thousand, John, or something like that, was it?
The lowest level was four thousand five hundred, and the upper was nineteen thousand five hundred.
What was, say again, I'm sorry, forgive me.
The lowest, the lowest subscription level was four thousand five hundred, and the highest subscription level was nineteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Right. So the more money you pay, basically, the wider the circulation, the more there's distribution, there were some other things like, um, I don't know, there's certain events where, again, you could connect with different business leaders, the, he might have sent a sample to the office, I'm not sure, I could bring it in next week for you to look at, I brought, I got one sample, finally, and, um, I think the actual article that, uh, interviewed me was, he put a link on it, right, John, I think?
He did. I, I did get a, a word document, that is, the content of your, uh, interview, and I shared that with the Commissioners previously.
Okay. So that's what that was, it night, it came on the, ironically, it came on the heels of, uh, Chairman Shea, remember, you and I were interviewed for another magazine, remember that?
Right.
Joe, so it, I thought it was the same kind of thing, and it came so quickly on the heels of that, I figured, well, you know, maybe Norfolk County is a good county, very proud of it, and, you know, this is good for the county to get more press and more news, and get our name out there, you know, but, um, uh, I don't know, I wish I wasn't aware of the cost, maybe there's a way we can finance four thousand, I'm not sure, but we have to, I defer to you gentlemen, of course, and for discussion. Hope I captured it. John?
Yeah, uh, the missing link was, uh, we had Clifton Larson review the, um, final rule for any eligibility uh, space, they did not see that this particular, um, cost could fit into ARPA, um, under any existing category other than a revenue replacement option. Um, Norfolk County has not used revenue replacement, we're distributing that value to our communities. Um, but if the Commissioners desire to do so, we would, we would move in that direction and and, and take some of the funds, um, and redirect them towards this purpose, that's up to you folks.
Yeah. Tough call.
Any other comments on this, uh, item? If it's not opera eligible, I, I think we'd I don't know. I agree, I think it's, it's helpful, and I hope to, we hope to hear from the other one, but I don't see how we can pay to go in there, especially in you know, these tight times, et cetera, I just, I mean, we're very proud of the county. We're redoing a lot, we're having a new website, everything, I think we're taking the right steps to keep our our foot in the game, so to speak, but, um, I'm it's a little foreign to me to pay, to pay to play, so to speak. But I, I it's a new one, so.
It is, I would, and I appreciate that, could I ask, maybe as a courtesy, could we direct the director, with your permission, of course, to, uh, talk to Tristan and just say, put it on a back burner, and maybe investigate some alternative ways to finance this, there might be some other ways to do it. I, I, I see, I, I agree totally what you're saying, Joe, I can't see taking money out of our budget, again, for what the purpose we serve, 'cause I didn't, I don't quite see that, you know, the relationship there, is it a good thing, yep, it's always good to put our county in a good light, no question, but to be spending money like that for a publication, I I look at risk and reward, you know, I mean, if it was a couple hundred dollars or something like that, I'd be like, you know, no problem, but that's still a significant thing. How about if we ask John to engage with Tristan, and look at some other ways, and maybe come back to him later, if something comes up? That be all right?
Sure.
We'd have to talk to him.
We'll have John keep his eye on it and talk to him one final time.
You know, one of the things I can talk to Commissioner Stady about is, um, you, you referenced Business View Magazine, which I'll give you an update under Director's Report for, their model's different, they don't, they don't, they weren't looking for funding from the county to help reduce the document, they wanted sponsors. Um, and, and we can certainly ask Tristan if there's, uh, an option for them to fund the subscription through an avenue like that, rather than through public.
That's, that's the thought I'm having, that's what I was thinking. That's what I was thinking.
Be happy to talk, I'll be happy to talk. Very nice, very nice.
Well, very nice, very professional, yep. Thank you, guys, thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other comments on American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one?
No, sir.
Oh, wait, did you say Franklin would wanna have a photo or something with that, or that's going to visit Franklin on that award, that didn't come up?
Um, Assistant Director indicated that Jen Thompson said at a later date, possibly in
We're going to town council.
In March, there may be a council meeting and an opportunity to have a public presentation with the, uh, with the check.
Oh, great, okay. Okay, I'll talk to you about it next week, all right, good. Thank you.
Number twelve, we previously did, we're gonna go to number thirteen, bid openings at one thirty, we have none. Contract awards, we have none. Number fifteen, request that the Commissioners review the Mass DEP Apprehensive Notice of Resource Area Delineation Form, A N R A D. Needs a vote to, of to allow the chairman to sign it, I'm looking at WPA Form 4A, which is a Notice of Resource Area Delineation, uh, completed by Patrick Higgins. Our engineer, it's ready to go. We do these periodically. This, uh, is for the area at four hundred Main Street in the town of Walpole. It gives all the longitude, latitude, and the different maps that it's on. This is standard stuff, we've done this before, three or four a year, you have any questions, Patrick's on the line. Otherwise, I'd request the form to, I'd request the vote to allow the chairman to sign it, so we can go forward.
Is, is Patrick on the line, Mr. Chairman, I can't see the screen. Is Patrick there?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, Commissioners, how you doing?
Yeah.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, you're in trouble, I, uh, I met your brother over the weekend at a conference. He had, he had some inside information on you, you're in big trouble, but, uh, no, nice, nice man to meet, nice gentleman.
Thank you.
Nice meeting with him. I got no questions on the problem, on the.
This is standard stuff, right, we've done this before?
Y- yes, Commissioner, yes.
Okay, any questions?
No, it's fine.
Motion to have the chair sign.
Yep, second, that's fine.
Motion to have the chair sign, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick, thank you.
Thanks, Patrick.
Welcome.
Number sixteen, transfer request within the fiscal year twenty-three IT budget for approval. We have Sam here with us, Sam, we're gonna have you come up and get in the hot seat. Sam Evans, uh, Chief Information Officer, there's a letter dated January twentieth. Dear Commissioners, I have requested a transfer of sixty thousand dollars from IT Account Repair Service Computer Software, it gives all the numbers to account, computer supplies to enable spending for the rest of fiscal year two thousand and twenty on items such as, and then he lists five or six items. Sam is here, we're gonna ask him to explain this, and, like, it is ready to go. Director Cronin, correct?
It is.
Yeah, for clarification, that was the hot seat when Chairman O'Brien sat right there, but I don't think it's a hot seat anymore.
All right, good. I'm ready, though. You ready on this transfer? Why don't you tell us about generally how you're gonna use this money, Sam, we're ready to.
So just to give you a little bit of details, we have some, excuse me, some wiring work that's gonna happen in the server room at the registry building to improve some of the, uh, data flow and to expand uh, some of the wiring jacks over there, we're also going to be doing some wiring improvements over at the Wallaston Recreational Facility, uh, which is in dire need of some upgrades, and that's also gonna help us to improve the cybersecurity situation over there, and we gotta get that done before the golf course reopens, so that's a couple of the big ones, we're gonna upgrade a couple of the servers for the same reasons, to improve cybersecurity, to make things go a little bit faster, so that's some of the spending in particular, and then just to shore us up for the rest of the fiscal year.
We need to check with John.
Nope, this is on his advice.
Okay.
To move it into that account.
Okay, any questions, Commissioners, any questions?
That sounds fine.
Everything's fine, okay.
Thank you for your.
I'm sad, not bad, Sam.
Thank you.
So hard.
Thank you, wanna make the motion?
Sure, I'll just move that, uh, request as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, with the Commission review and approve. I'm sorry, transfer request for, in the fiscal year twenty-three IT budget, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Sam, it's all set.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Number seventeen, opioid abuse prevention grant in partnership with the Norfolk County DA, we have a copy of the letter and an application encouraging everyone, I'm gonna ask Director Cronin to explain it, we'd like to get this out of, uh, uh, off our desk this week, but I'd like a vote, but take a look at it, and John, your explanation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, this is the product that was promised last week. As you know, District Attorney, uh, Mike Morrissey, um, has graciously agreed, uh, and offered, agreed to collaborate with the Commissioners on a, um, a grant to disperse opioid settlement funds that the Norfolk County Commissioners received recently in the amount of sixteen thousand, approximately sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. District Attorney Morrissey will, uh, provide sufficient funds to bring that pool of money up to approximately twenty-three thousand dollars, such that each of the community coalition members in Norfolk County that work directly with his office would receive a one thousand dollar grant um, to be put forward um, consistent with the opioid, opioid settlement, um, agreement to supplement and strengthen, rather than supplant resources for prevention, harm reduction, treatment and recovery from opioid addiction. Uh, this letter was sent last evening to the District Attorney's Office and his program coordinator, Christine McDougall. Uh, I was informed this morning that DA gave it a thumbs up, he's fine with it. If the Commissioners are fine, I'll throw it on a letterhead, uh, and we'll share it with the, um, Norfolk County community coalition members, um, through an application process that will start uh, January thirtieth, when the District Attorney's Office has a meeting of the coalition in his office. Um, this grant would require the participating agencies, or those willing to participate, I should say, to submit their applications to me by February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. We're simply looking for a strategy or a plan as to how each unit will adhere to the, um, directive I just met, mentioned, and then we'll send the funds out to them. Um, and, um, on behalf of the District Attorney's Office, uh, make the awards, as well as the Norfolk County Commissioners.
Commissioners, any comments?
Yeah, so, uh, if I could, again, for you, Mr. Chairman, so we're, I know we're partnering up, I know, I was at that meeting with District Attorney Morrissey, and we're turning the money, you know, we're making the money available, I didn't know, John, but forgive me, I didn't know you were gonna be actively reviewing and taking on yet another task, I thought they have a committee for that, there's a, there's an executive director. forgive me, I didn't know you were going to be actively reviewing and taking on yet another task. I thought they have a committee for that. There's a, there's an executive director, Christie McDougall. I thought it was going to be her job to review the applications. Now you're saying you're going to review the applications. Is that something we want to do? I mean, is that really, I thought we were just being like partners with them and saying, here's the money, we're, we're supporting you, and let the people in that field who are experts decide the grants. No? There's something different here?
No, I, I, I think originally, as, as the concept kind of evolved, there was some dialogue about the pros and cons of either agency managing the grant. And, and frankly, Commissioner, I, I don't object to handling this duty. It's, it's a one-off. It's a, it's a grant distribution. Since we received the opioid settlement agreement through the Attorney General's Office Settlement Agreement, we have the obligation to keep the records associated with any grant dispersments. So the, the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office is not using opioid settlement funds to match. I believe he's using asset forfeiture funds. So we become, if you will, the, the host agency because we're the source of the major fund, and I feel comfortable holding any records associated with the use of disbursement of the funds, and I can handle it.
Okay, so I'll take it. Thank you. I'll take it one step further than, because again, it's all new. I want to make sure we're clear. So moving forward, I know they meet, you know, monthly. So like every month or so often, there'll be an award given out, say, to Franklin or Dedham or Milton or Canton. Is that how it goes? Something like that?
It may not be as sporadic as that. I, I envision receiving some number of applications associated with solicitation.
Yeah.
We will review them to make sure they're intact, that they're real, that they have a connection to the purpose. And then through, much like we do with the ARPA awards, Commissioner Stady, we will bring them forward to the commissioners for their approval and disbursement. So we'll have a process here to award the grants, and then the checks will be cut by Norfolk County Treasury to, to these respective organizations. So think of the ARPA process as mimicking what you'll see.
Okay, that's great. Is anybody else going to be assisting? Is like Bill Buckley or anybody else going to be helping you on this? Or is this a solo task?
I, I, I'll have to assess that when I see the level of information that some of these organizations are sending me. I don't expect it to be voluminous. We're asking basically for a letter of interest, so we're trying to keep it relatively simple and non-bureaucratic, non-bureaucratic.
Okay. All right. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Well, John, you got my note. I won't be able to make that meeting Monday.
You will or not?
I will not. No, I have another obligation, but I do intend to go as well. I can't.
Got it.
Okay, can we have a motion to send this along?
Sure, I'll move it.
Okay, motion made and seconded. To all the county, to sell whether to all the member towns relative to opioid settlement grant opportunities. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, report of the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few items. I did speak with the business development coordinator from Business View Magazine. We spoke about that earlier. Chad Lovless indicated that the product for Norfolk County had been approved and will be put into production in February. It'll be released for dispersment sometime in early March. And I think the commissioners understand from my previous report on this, the Kraft Group in Foxborough became one of the major sponsors for our, our, that's the timeline for that. Just a quick footnote, we, I had a meeting yesterday electronically with our, our partners in Dedham Town Government. We were reviewing some ARPA grant challenges that they were encountering. Through the discussion, I haven't spoken with the town manager in a while, but I learned, just for your information, that they're getting ready in March, I believe, to move into their new public safety building. So this spring, Dedham will be reoccupying and moving public safety personnel into this new space, which I think you know is right behind the existing town hall. They are putting out to bid the action to demolish the existing police station, which you know is right outside our front door, and convert that space into a green space. That work will commence pretty much right after they vacate the police department. The building project, demolition, I expect, will happen in the next six months or so. So we're going to see some changes right outside our door here in Dedham, much to the benefit, I think, of the local community, and I complimented them on all the work they've done. It's tremendous transformation, seeing not only their recent renovation of town hall, the new public safety building, and now the development of the green space. During our conversation, I informed Leon that we were recalculating our revenue calculations, and he was quite happy. It gives them, in their case, a couple hundred thousand dollars more flexibility to use ARPA money in ways that otherwise didn't fit into some of the other categories. So he's pretty happy. Wanted to let you know that, let's see, we are going to engage with mediation tomorrow afternoon at two-thirty. This is our second mediation with the Registry of Deeds and the mediator. Chairman Shea will be joining us for that action as well. And finally, happy to announce the county has received seventy-five thousand dollars in reimbursement from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts relative to the air mark to pay for the enhancements and improvements of the Wallston Playground that was recently completed. So the money's now in our treasury. Those are I have.
Any other further questions of the county director?
That's fine. It's great.
Thank you. Moving right along. Number eighteen, any emergency items or any other topic that the chair did not reasonably anticipate?
It's number nineteen, but.
That's number nineteen. I have none. Commissioners, if we have anything else, now's the time.
Just quickly, I just thought, if I could, very quickly, it was a pleasure to attend the MMA conference. It was actually very, very worthwhile. I attended a seminar on regionalization, and I thought that was very interesting. I'm very proud to say that collectively as a county, we're ahead of the curve. I think it's, again, it speaks well for all of us as a team, that we're looking at all the ways to be innovative and be progressive. The idea of what Billy Buckley's taken up with the weights and measures. Again, I floated it by a couple of different people that we saw, and they're very excited about that. And you talked to different administrators, some of them, you know, from the large towns and the small towns, and just exactly what Billy had said and Director Cronin, the large cities are all set, and the small ones get taken care of by the state. But it's those middle towns that don't. They're the ones that are going to need help. So I think we're on to something there. But the conference was great. Mr. Shea, I did see your son. I had a pleasure of seeing him later. I did not attend some of the things I wanted to because I was limited by some time, but I would think it's a worthwhile thing to do and hopefully we'll do it again with, you know, hopefully with the right, the right methods. But good conference for all of us. It was great.
I agree, and I think it's was, this is the first live conference in three years. I'm a, I'm an old MMA attendee from my previous world, but I always do receive some benefit and the networking is second to none. So I, I thought it was beneficial, and I agree.
Yeah.
And.
Great. You don't get an opportunity like that enough to, like I said, I saw so many elected officials across the county, and you get a chance to talk to them. And again, they're worried about ARPA, they're worried about, of course, there's a, you know, a new leadership in terms of the state house and different topics. Just the idea of just doing that a worth, worthwhile itself. So it's just great. But fun time. And again, hopefully you can do it again. That'll be good. With that, I'm at motion to adjourn, I guess.
Bill Buckley has something to say.
As, as we, as we said, you said other items unanticipated. I, it had slipped my mind, but I know in the past we have adjourned in honor of longstanding municipal officials who passed away. And I was informed yesterday that former selectman, Wapo Selectman Clifton Snuffer, who was a longtime Finance Committee member, as well as a friend of Norfolk County, passed yesterday. So perhaps I would through you ask that we perhaps adjourn in his memory after a lifetime of, of service to one of our constituent communities.
Okay, well, a very good call, Bill. One more time with the name.
Clifton K. Snuffer, Jr.
Okay. Okay, I'll make the motion. I'll second your motion to adjourn, and then our chairman can adjourn with, with Clifton's name. In memory of.
Yep. All right, so we're adjourning at two oh nine, Mr. Chairman, seconded by Mr. Collins.
That's correct.
With the memory of.
Cliff Snuffer. Thank you, sir.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.